Session for August the 4th, 2022 to order. Dr. Spence, you got some items of information?
Yes, sir. Dr. Whitehead with our achievement scores from previous year.
Yeah, so good afternoon. We have had a release of the statewide scores from last school year, and so this will give you an idea of where we are in context with both RISA and the state. And then we've included the 2019 and 2021 results to also give you some context for where we have been, where we are now, and then what we're aiming to try to get back to as a system. Some of the interesting things as we move into the next slide and you take a look at the lines. So the orange line is going to represent 2019, the yellow line 2021, and then the green bars are the 2022 results. One of the things that you'll notice is that you can see similar trends with RISA and the state as far as gaps that exist in the time. But there are some unique factors about 2019 data in 2021 as well. So even though they're there for the context of seeing the trends, 2019 was the last year that we had what they consider like the full milestones assessment that included constructive response items in math and in multiple sections of ELA and longer test sections. In 2021, we no longer had constructive response in math, and the constructive response items in 2021 were reduced, and the overall item count in the tests were reduced as of 2021. There were also limited data sets in 2021, which is why the state said they requested the waiver for accountability. But you can see that even with those impacts, that those same pieces and changes impacted everybody. So it wasn't like the changes only applied to Glen County or they only applied to the state, they applied to everybody. And so it's somewhat interesting to see how some of the trends stayed similar across those patterns of time and looking at it. One of the things that you'll notice right off, though, is that third grade ELA is going to be one of our bigger gaps. We've got another one that'll come up. But again, some of this data is items of information that we reviewed as we got the literacy review back in place and decided to make some changes there, too. So more information on that will be coming as Dr. Green and Mrs. Miller will wrap up this conversation with the plans that we have. If you'll move on as well, you'll see fourth grade, quite consistent changes, and the gap is consistent for the state and with us, between us having five to six points, trying to get back to the 2019 place where we were with scores at that time. Fifth grade is one of our smaller sections, and so as we see some of these changes, this is then spurring questions about looking back to see what standards students missed instruction on when we had closure in 2020. And then for students that were virtual for another year, how were they impacted by that lack of continuity in standards with the prerequisite skills that they needed to be successful in some of these grades where we're seeing bigger differences than in other grade levels? So taking a look back at where they were in 2020 is one of the places that we are right now. Sixth grade data, and you can see some differences there with the gaps, trying to make those up. Sixth grade ELA and math, we have been noticing similar trends in our math data this year. So that's been something that's been of interest across, not just with us, but across the state. Seventh grade, again, was similar to fifth grade with not as big a gap that we've been looking at. Eighth grade ELA, we're close to recovering back to that level as well as in American Lit at the high school level. So again, knowing what those prerequisite skills are to be successful at these grade levels becomes part of the conversation as we're looking into it. But the American literature results put us very close to where we were in 2019 as a system. Third grade math starts kicking off the math, which has us with a more consistent trend. You'll see more of a flat line even in the RISA and the state data as well, as far as the differences from the years that we're looking at. So fourth grade math follows in there, again, looking back to the implementation of our curriculum in math and the consistency that that brought about from grade to grade with instruction there. Fifth grade math, again, similar with a little bit of a, more of a dip for RISA and the state than we experienced between those years. Sixth grade math, sixth grade math for not just Glen, but RISA and the state has some of the biggest gaps that we're looking at from where we were in 2019. So again, that's just an item of interest to figure out what may be missing for some of those students and not just with our instruction and curriculum. Seventh grade, similar as we saw in other grades for math. Eighth grade, again, kind of has that flat line. And then in algebra, we're seeing in Glen County more of a delta with our getting back to 2019 than RISA and the state. So this is another area that's, I know, on Dr. Green's radar to look at as well. Another note on that one, in 2022, we had fewer middle school students take the Algebra I assessment than we did in previous years. So that somewhat accounts for some of that. Historically, our students that take Algebra I as eighth graders score well. And so we had a smaller number this past year in middle school who took that assessment. Fifth grade science, again, some of the work that needs to be done there, we've been able to look at system-wide, and we now have our full-time science coordinator who's addressing some of those things with pacing. Eighth grade science, again, we're along with RISA with the kind of gap, but not as big as what the state, state has a smaller gap than we've seen there. Biology is our highlight, so for sure. They have exceeded where we were in 2019 with biology and staying ahead of RISA and the state as well. And again, Dr. Green and Mrs. Miller may have other insights to share, but I would say that the high schools have talked about how well and effective those PLCs work together for the biology work at the high school, so.
Across those three years, I know we've played with math some and played with social studies, maybe sciences, too, at the high school. Across all three years, were same grade students taking biology? I know maybe you mix this up sometimes, but is it still like a 10th grade class, or did we, sometimes we shifted, well, that's going to be 11th grade class now. Is it consistent across those three years?
It would be consistent with students that took physical science in eighth grade. They take it as a ninth grader instead of a 10th, but all the other students take it pretty much as a 10th grade student. But that has remained consistent, so it's a good observation to note. Eighth grade social studies, again, we saw some benefit here in the system of getting closer to that work. And this year, we'll have some common district assessments as well in both science and social studies at middle school that hopefully will play into this. And then US history, we're not too far off on being back to where we were in 2019. You know, I think, again, our teachers have worked hard, and we know that our teachers are the ultimate variable in any of the scores that we look at, for sure. But I didn't know if you'd had a chance to look and had any specific questions before Dr. Green and Mrs. Miller will forward with plans.
I may have missed this, but just to clarify, when you were talking about the changes in the exams from 2019 to 2021, did we go back to where, in 2022, did we go back to where they were in 2019?
No, they made those changes permanent.
That's a permanent change, okay.
So, yes.
Unless I missed something or didn't interpret it the right way, it looks like in all categories, we still scored above the state and the RISA.
We did.
In 2022, didn't we?
This was inclusive of our levels two through four.
Right.
And so as an additional layer, we have been looking at just threes and fours, and there are some areas there that we've got to strengthen, for sure.
Sure, I understand. But still, they're good highlights. There's still the state and the RISA in most of those categories.
I think we should be 10 points above the state and the RISA in every category, and that's our goal.
We should, probably.
10 points?
I mean, we feel like we should be in a different place than we are, so that's why we wanted to kind of tack on, and they're going to add on some of the plans we have to get us there.
I could go by, I could do what I normally do and give you a hard time, but.
It's very, yes, yes. We definitely want to pick up on those things. But I also, I think we all want to always be cautious of trying to be complacent either, so just because we believe in what can be done.
So just in reviewing those, just speaking to one area, our third grade ELA was one area where we were just slightly below the state. And so that's an area of definite focus for us in elementary school. I also wanted to point out that phonics and vocabulary instruction have been missing pieces from our programs over the past few years. And so with our new literacy program that we just adopted, and the teachers today were training, and they were so excited about it, by the way. But with, including the phonics, grammar, and vocabulary instruction, we feel that's going to strengthen that so that those third grade kids can see a big jump this year. And then also in elementary school, we're focusing on instructional support teachers at targeted schools. Some of our more at-risk schools, they have a teacher in their building that can serve as a model teacher who goes around. Since we did do away with our instructional coaches this year, this teacher is one that can go in model lessons and help teachers and assist any struggling teachers, especially in our schools that have a lot of new beginning teachers or teachers new to our district.
Does that person have a classroom of their own in their?
In elementary school, they don't. In middle school, they will. So in elementary school, they're available to help establish a model classroom at each grade level so that she can bring, or that, or he can bring teachers into that classroom to see what it should look like. So that's our goal this year.
If you'll go back up to the first slide, yeah, right there. So just district-wide things that Dr. Green and I are working on together. You can see the list there. I'll just kind of highlight, for the first time, the district, out of our budgets, we purchased science lab consumable materials for our teachers to use so that those essential labs can be done in classrooms. And so kids actually have the items, the cotton balls, the iodine, the, any kind of things that teachers were having to go out and purchase with their own funding in the past, we've purchased that through our budgets so that teachers to take that burden off of them, to take that financial burden off of them, and to make the materials easily accessible so that those labs can be incorporated weekly as they teach science.
I'm going to go ahead and.
I'm sorry, for secondary, we, I tried to build out a more comprehensive plan for our multi-tiered system of support for math and for ELA. So we have tier one now into literature for 6-8. Well, in addition, we also have Rise Up. One of the things that happens as you progress through secondary is you see less small groups or less individualized instruction. So Rise Up is one of those programs that we're piling alongside RE180 that forces teachers, and it's very simple, but it forces teachers to plan in groups. So you always, you're always looking at data and making decisions based off where students are scheduled, or testing, I should say, or assessing based off the format of assessment. So it's going to almost force them to look more intentional at what student needs are and then plan lessons for that. That's in the reading resource class or reading intervention class. And then already, the same thing for math is an additional step to make sure that we have something that's prescriptive and diagnostic that gives students instruction, but also puts them on an individualized plan to make sure that their skills, their skill deficits are being met in the math intervention class. We have the instructional support teachers with model classrooms. That's not at every middle school, it's three of the four. And there's a specific reason why the fourth one doesn't have the IST teacher, but each one does have the model classroom that they're having. So they'll, the principals have the option to have teachers rotate through that lab class and then also have that teacher support in class. Then we have a standards-aligned textbook for algebra, which we hadn't adopted a text in algebra for years, like 16 years. I had to verify a brand-new text across the district. They've been purchasing different things, supplemental materials, but an actual official test. This text won't be in schools until January because the new standards roll out 2023, and so the vendor is not rolling out that new text aligned to standards until January. So until that time, we just got together as algebra PLCs, one at GA and one at Brunswick High, to pace out a better approach to teaching algebra for our high school students. And one thing that I should note, that I think Dr. Whitehead said, is that once a student takes algebra, most often in high school, they're a struggling math student. Typically, and with the exception of this year, because we did have the reduced number of students in algebra, but typically those students end up, stronger students end up in algebra in middle school. And so you get a larger group of students who struggle with math and algebra in high school. So teaching has to look different. And so we're working on identifying specifically what those needs look like so that then we can build a more comprehensive approach for algebra classes at the high school level. Dr. Spence always says you can solve most of that with scheduling, and so we definitely looked at that as well. Who's in front of the kids? Do we have our best teachers teaching it? And for the most part, we made those adjustments.
Any questions for these three ladies?
Keep up the good work.
All right, Mr. Demmsdell, facilities update.
Good evening.
All right, we'll start out with our facilities update. We'll go through, before we jump into it, I do want to say that, just give credit where credit's deserved, we were able to get everything ready. I hope that you've heard good comments about, from feedback from your open houses at Needwood, Oglethorpe, Golden Isles, and St. Simon's Elementary. It was, one of the guys that we work with said, "We ain't stopped running yet, but it's going to be a photo finish." And that is exactly what I think it ended up being. So we're all tired horses right now, that's for sure. But we do feel like, I'm very proud of what we were able to accomplish in conjunction with our contractors and everybody over this summer. Really impressive.
I was in Needwood, and I won't tell you what, but they said two weeks ago, there was no way. But it looked great, so.
Rebecca said there's no way we're going to get it. Three weeks ago, she told Dr. Green.
Right.
I think it should clean up around the bus, you know, the bus stop now's it. Inside looks great.
And we did do, and you'll see here, we're in the process of creating those punch lists. We have two of the schools that we've done, and we'll be going to Oglethorpe tomorrow to create a punch list as well. But we'll go ahead and start now and talk first about the new Altama. As you know, there was a holdup there. We were trying to figure out what was wrong with the humidity issue that we were having. We discovered that there was some spray foam insulation that was not, it wasn't installed like it was supposed to be. So we've gone back. The contractor has taken responsibility for that, has contacted the subcontractor, and that subcontractor will start correcting that problem on tomorrow. So they'll be doing the outside of the building tomorrow, and then we'll, I'm sorry, the inside of the building. I think we said the inside of the building first, and then we'll do the outside of the building next week. So that correction. Now, that picture is right when the playground equipment for the pre-K playground was being installed yesterday. So I don't want you to think that that is the full playground for the entire school because it is not. But that is the very beginning. I wanted to show you that that was going up. I did stop by there today, and the larger playground is being installed, was being installed today. Probably be Wednesday before they complete that playground, 100% of the kids to play in. All right, next. Our Glen Academy Gym Edition, that's a photo from the backside. You can see that all of the exterior, the glass, the roofing is all done. The interior's coming along really well. Also, the ceiling grid is being placed right now. The wrestling room that we're creating is making progress. We've had the removal of the wall and are ready, or making progress in that area as well. Sidewalks have been poured on one side of the building, and within two weeks, the sidewalks all around the building should be finished as well. Met with the contractors yesterday, and they wanted me to let you guys know that as far as the timeline was concerned, they were on target, except for that gym floor. And that gym floor has really kind of put a hold on things. The Connor Flooring is the secondary floor company that we had to go to to get some gym flooring. That flooring will be here in a few weeks, two to three weeks, but then it has to sit for two more weeks minimum to climatize before it can be installed. So they are removing their construction trailer on August 25th. They're going to move into the building and have a workstation in the building there at that point, and manage what else is going on, but really are waiting on that gym floor. It's to finish the whole project up. They're looking at probably the 31st of October before there's the final sign-off on that, on that project. All right. And then next, St. Simon's Elementary, currently making expected progress at St. Simon's as well. There was a little bit of a scare, I don't know if you guys heard of it. We did, we did some preliminary work to get ready to have an extension off of the old building where administration is going to, a new administration wing is going to come off of that old building at some point. But to do that, we had to take the ceilings out and run some different piping that's going to go out where the new extension's going to happen. Well, it looked pretty torn up. It was kind of in the same situation you were talking about with Needwood, but we were able to get everything together and get that back on top of things and had a successful open house as well. And Ms. Ginn seems to be happy with the result there as well. So this is the media center that you're looking at here. It is the last bit of glass that needs to be installed, and it's just going to be a beautiful area. I suggest that when this is done, you guys go through and take a look. It's the two-story media center, and that glass should be installed tomorrow. So really close to finishing that up and completely getting it all together. We're still on target for December to finish up and have the kids move over into that building for January. Still haven't heard for sure on the switchgear equipment, the electrical switchgear. Still planning on that being here in November. There has been an alternate plan to have some temporary power, and that temporary power is running everything that's there now. So if we get close to that point, and we look like we're not going to be able to make that move, there's some negotiation that we probably, we might be able to make the move even if the switchgear didn't come yet. So we're going to, we'll talk about that when it gets closer. We're just going to cross our fingers and hope that that switchgear makes it when it's supposed to. In preparation for that happening, we went ahead and made some changes in the parking lot so that when the kids do make the jump over in December, then when you come back in January, there'll be a different flow of traffic because at that point, the row of classrooms will all be demoed. And so the bus loop that exists right there and things like that, that's not going to be the same drop-off anymore. So we worked with First Baptist Church. Mr. Larry White has been the contact, he's been a super person to work with, and have done a lot of preliminary work so that we're ready to make that transition in a day. If, whenever we're ready, there's no work that needs to be done, that traffic flow can switch at any time that we decide for it to switch. All right, that's where we are at St. Simon's Elementary. Needwood Middle School, as Mr. Halsey said, a couple of weeks ago, looked a good bit different. I tried to take a picture at each location that kind of showcased as much as I could get in one photograph. This shows you the paint, the ceilings, the lights, the flooring. All of that was redone and done throughout the entire school. Everything is complete except for punch list items currently. All right. Golden Isles Elementary, same. We had a punch list that we created yesterday. The one thing that's outstanding right now is that gym floor. That was, picture was taken a couple of days ago, and the gym floor is down, but has not, doesn't have the lines painted on it, or if they did, they may have painted them today. Dwayne, did you go?
This weekend.
This weekend, okay. So they're going to paint those lines on this weekend, and that will be complete as well. As you know, I've mentioned in the past that the kids, there are some kitchen equipment pieces that have not made it in yet, but we have kitchen equipment that was available to be able to stand in during the time while we wait for that kitchen equipment to come in. So it should be seamless. As far as the kids are concerned, everything's ready to roll there as well. All right, next. Oglethorpe Point Elementary, again, complete except for our punch list items. So another photo finish there, but we feel confident that's viewed. So, another, another photo finish there, but we feel confident that's viewed down the main hallway. And you can see there, again, very similar renovation, flooring, ceiling, lighting as well. All right? Next. Satilla Marsh, because of the focus on the four schools that we had to get ready to open and, and be ready for kids, we haven't really done too much on Satilla Marsh, other than go through and do some preparation documents for documenting what currently exists there, and will continue in that process as we move forward. Our GA Existing Gym, we currently have, the contract was sent to Stagefront for the new sound system. I know there's a little bit of a delay there, but everything, including all the items that you see there, are scheduled to be ready for the basketball season of 2022, this season.
Does the delay in finishing, no auxiliary gym impact any of this or basketball?
It, not, well, I guess, Steve, it'd probably be a question that we...
I'll proceed.
So, yeah. And we do have some plans in place. I know Ryan Alfau, the wrestling coach, sent an email yesterday, and there is a plan, if they don't get moved over, they have a place to have practices and everything until that time. So, we'll see. Hopefully, I'm hoping that it's before. Usually wrestling season starts around the second week in October for practices, official practices.
But I was thinking about volleyball mostly.
Mm-hmm. They should be good. We're going to work around there.
Okay.
Okay. All right? Next. Our Glen Academy Annex. I did tell you that this is the month that I would come back and give you some detail on what had happened as far as the assessment and the movement forward. Currently, I met with Tyson Construction and John Tooten, and they've developed a plan to move forward. The plan is substantially less cost than what you've already approved for that room to be redone. It was $168,000. It looks like about $124,000 is what the difference, is what the actual cost projection is for this project. What we did was we found out that the joists that are there are such a pristine grade of wood that they are really, they're in really good shape. Except for some of the surfaces where the termite damage was, and that was what was causing the floor to sag a little bit. So, it's proposed that we reuse those joists, and we go through and we scab in 2x6 treated wood to bring the floor up to level across the board. We go in and we excavate the dirt underneath that. There's, currently, the crawl space is only about six inches. So, you can't get under there to do any work or anything. And, and it's an open vent system, like some of the old houses that are up, you know, they have the vents along the bottom of the house. And it's proposed that we close that vent system. We excavate the dirt out in between those joists. We excavate the dirt out to about 30 to 36 inches, and then we go back in and we put about a 40 to 50 mil Visqueen-type vapor barrier, and that we run air into that as well. So it would be a conditioned airspace as well. And, so basically, we're sealing off that, and then we'll have a pest control expert come in, recommend how we treat that before we rebuild. At that point, we'll put two, three-quarter inch layers of plywood, well, OSB actually, as a subfloor. Turns out, OSB is more vapor, I mean, more water resistant than, than the other, and lasts longer and is more resistant. So, that, and then, then we'll put the finished flooring on top of that. After the finished flooring, everything will be right back up to where it's supposed to be. We will have to add, and we found this out, we'll have to add new baseboard. And the reason that we have to add the new baseboard is because the baseboard was cut to, to minimize the effect of it giving, the floor being higher on one end than it was on the other end whenever it was rebuilt after the fire, because there's no way to get everything the right way, I guess, at that time. So they ended up cutting that baseboard. So, the baseboard isn't true all the way across. So we'll be, we'll determine what new baseboard needs to go there and have it match the Wayne Scott as well. And then the flooring hasn't been determined yet. Currently, there's a carpet flooring in there, and we could go back with the carpet. At a later point, we'll determine whether it needs to be a carpet, or if it needs to be some of the high-end luxury vinyl tile, the LVT. So, we'll make that decision in the future. That's kind of where we are with that project at this point.
But that new number you gave us, does that include the flooring?
Yes.
Okay. Which flooring does that include? The carpet or...
Well, I think it includes the higher of the two, so that it would, it does not include closing up the vents on the bottom, though. That was one of the notes that came over from Tyson.
Is that why the number, so, so it's a substantial savings from what we talked about. But, and I'm not a contractor, but when we talked about the, the major work that's going to have to be done, we talked about steel joists and concrete and everything else. $40,000 doesn't sound like that great of a savings to me, where we're just going to scab some boards together. That's what it sounds like to me. So, is the, is the cost savings negated a little bit by the fact that we're having to do that extra work, or am I just looking at it the wrong way?
No.
It doesn't sound like that great of a savings. We, we were talking about going, you know, metal beams and joists and tearing everything out, and it doesn't sound like that great of a savings when, I just don't understand why, in the bigger savings, if you will, for just putting 2x6s or 6x6 or whatever it is on the, to scab the boards back together.
Right. Now, I'm no expert on cost and, and the way things are happening with costs and, right now. But I do know that inflation is, is one of the things that would have an effect within a few months, I suppose. I don't know. Not a whole...
The lumber's going back down, though. So, I still would like to see if we could, I, I'd like to see the, the budget for that if we could.
Sure.
The proposed at the 160, and then what it is now, and what those line items are, what, where paper flooring, joists, ceiling, the crawl space, just break it out for us if you don't mind, by the means that's possible. If John can provide it, that'd be great.
And I think that it's, you're on target by saying, is, are there other aspects that have been included, and some have been? It's, it's not as easy as saying, okay, well, the cost savings is just the changes that we made that were better than what we thought. There may be other things that are added.
If we save $1,000, but spend 60 on, on the crawl space, and I, I get, I just want to see it broken out if we could.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I can't see it being very cheap to dig out an additional 30, 36 inches of dirt.
That's all made.
Through those beams, it's all that's going to be, have to be hand shoved.
That is hand.
Into wheelbarrows, and then barreled out, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Right.
Obviously, the labor is going to be a pretty substantial piece.
Good labor, in-school suspension.
Of that.
If it was me, we'd have pain capsules and leave. Free labor.
36-inch crawl space. I agree. We'll, we'll have that breakdown for you soon.
Worst-case scenario, you know, we're keeping these beams because they seem structurally sound.
Right.
Say we get to another room, and those beams aren't sound.
Right.
Is the plan to patchwork with a metal beam over here and a wooden beam over here?
It, I've been told it is, it is going to be a case by case. Now, when we look at the surfaces, and we walk the entire building, this room had the worst signs of wear of any room, and that's the reason that was tackled first. So, as we walk the building, we said, this room will be what we look at next. And as you excavate, and it gives you a little bit of a view into other, you know, spaces and, and how, you know, if it's more exterior that looks like, and right now, it looks more like more the exterior walls, thinking that the hallway may not even be in the mix. It seems to be pretty solid. So, then, the whole corridor down the middle of the building may not even be touched. It may just be classrooms, which would be some substantial savings in the long run. But all of that will be determined as we tackle each of those rooms individually.
What's the total number of rooms as of...
Six right now.
Six?
Yeah. We're looking at six rooms that could possibly have to be replaced. That's including that one. So, the plan seems to be that once this one is, is back up and running, and we do this throughout the, this school year, since we've already, we have that place to work in, then during the summer, if things go as it look like, looks like they may, they may be able to tackle the rest of the rooms during next summer, in one summer. So...
Do you have a timetable on each room, or this particular room since you already have it open?
I don't. I would assume that it's, if they're talking about being able to do five, being able to complete five rooms next summer, I mean, I would think that we're looking at a few months.
Or one?
Well, the first room is the hardest in the material and all that kind of stuff, so we would have a lot of things in place going into the others. And I think that's it. I'm no contractor, so I'm just kind of rela, relaying the information that I've had conversations about as well. I can't give you 100% answers on that, but that's just kind of the, the way the conversations have leaned whenever I ask those questions. All right? To the next. All right, well, here are our stadiums. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see the Glen County Stadium, but the turf is down. I just took a quick picture. I know the netting is not the best way to take a picture, but I did want you to see how it looked. We had some overhead aerial views that we took early on, but the shading in the, in the turf looked different. And it was all because of the way that the, the grass, the turf was laying. So if it was laying one way here and laying one way there, the sun was hitting it completely different, it looked like it was completely different colors. Well, when the backfill material had been added, that completely disappeared. Everything, everything looks just as it should. All right? That one is scheduled to be completed within...
August 9.
August 9? That's for the stadium?
That's when we sign off.
August 9. All right? And then, Steve, if you have anything to add to that, definitely.
No, we're on track. Everything's going well. They put up one goalpost yesterday, they'll be out there tonight putting up the last goalpost, and then there's about a half day left of work to do. Finish up next week. The executives from Phil Turf will be here Wednesday, and meet with Dwayne and myself and a couple others, and if we all approve, we'll sign off on it.
All right? And progress is being made on the other fields as well, which is the next slide. Go ahead to that next one. Okay, got it. And this is, the reason I took this picture was to show you that the, it's not, it's not for a beautiful picture, but, it was actually a nice sunrise. But the, on the right-hand side there, the turf has been delivered, so it's ready to go on. The rock has already been put in, the surface is prepared for turf to start to be put on now. We're looking at two, two weeks to, to three weeks. When I talked to the crew yesterday morning, they say two to three weeks to have the turf on that field as well.
Will the parking lot remain closed during that whole time?
Unfortunately, yes. Only because they have to, and I, I did address that, because I wanted it cleared, but there's no way that we're going to have it cleared at that time because they have to go back and forth from that parking lot to carry those things onto the, they have to have a staging area, and that's the only place that we can do it. All right? And then our Brunswick High Field. Brunswick High currently is running about, it's, it's really, if we think about the horse race scenario we talked about earlier, Brunswick High's field has actually been making some ground because it has had the crew that's been there and working specifically on that, where we split crews for a while, working on the stadium and Glen Academy. So they're about one to two weeks behind the schedule for Glen Academy right now. So, we should be wrapping up all of the fields before too long. What would you say, Labor Day, is that?
Okay.
That Labor Day we're looking at? Have them, having them all ready to go. There was a hiccup. They, we did have the geothermal line that was hit, and we had to have that repaired. Glad to say that the contractors owned up and they paid for that out of, out of what we paid them. So, that is fixed, and everything at Brunswick High is back up and running. Luckily, it didn't affect areas that were utilized that often, and the other area really made it so that nobody at Brunswick High really even noticed a temperature change. But it is functioning back at 100% now as well. All right? I have a couple of other things. Mr. Waters, if you wanted to talk to him about the batting cage?
Yes, so the middle school batting cages, we, it took us a while really to secure the semen. We have finally got the semen, it's been four at each middle school. Because of the delay of semen, we had to reschedule the cage company to come back. So we talked to them today, and we believe they'll be here and finished in two to three weeks at each middle school with the installation of the cages. So, it took about two months longer than we thought on the semen, and so, that's why we're behind schedule a little bit, but if we get done in three weeks, that'll be right before the local softball starts.
All right? And the last update that I'd like to give you, and I appreciate your patience in listening to all of these projects, is our move to the board annex. If you've driven by the old Altama school, you'll see that there's a new sign out front that says that the, it is now an acting board annex. We have moved about 25 employees to that facility that are our functioning, our central registration, special ed, and professional learning is all happening through that facility. And we are on schedule to make the move for everyone else in a graduated manner from this building, and would finish up in December. So that our timeline puts everyone out of this building and functioning there for second semester, which would put us on target to, for the future plan, which would be to have some parking where we're sitting. Any questions? All right? Thank you very much for your time.
Let's go down to HVAC chillers.
Our chillers at Glen, Glen Middle and Jane Macon, actually, would you go back to that They, they currently are, they're high maintenance. They're having to go over on a regular basis. Chillers run in tandem, and they're both functioning now, with both being about as efficient as one. I mean, yeah, they're half as good as they should be. And that is an indication that those things are kind of on their last leg. Our coastal environment really is harsh on these pieces of equipment. This, these pieces of equipment, they are the air conditioning for the entire school. So if these things do go down 100%, we will be without air conditioning in these places. So, knowing that that is a possibility on the horizon, and considering the supply chain issues that we've seen, with these being around 32 weeks or more, we went ahead and sealed, we did sealed proposals, and they were solicited through the Georgia Procurement Registry. We had three vendors that attended our onsite pre-bid meeting, and two of those vendors submitted complete proposals, and those summaries are attached, so we can go there and take a look at those. The first is for Glen Middle School, and Air Management Systems, Inc. is the, who we recommend. They were ranked number one in one of our bid proposal, 379-946. Go ahead, you can go to the second one, unless there's any questions about that. It's the same company, the same two companies bid on both of these, and the same company was low bidder on each. And for Jane Macon, it's 373-796. And Air Management Systems, Inc. is a company out of Backstreet, Georgia. I did do three reference calls, and they had good references, Pierce County, Brantley County, and, I think it was Wayne County. They all had, back, Hapling County. They all had good things to say about them doing, and they, the reason I called them is because they did similar work for them as to what we're looking at for us.
Do you know how old the existing chillers are right now?
I think they're 12, around 12 years old, maybe 12, 13.
Those were built in 2009. We said they were built in 2009.
They probably haven't been replaced.
No, they're original.
What'd you say?
It's the original equipment that's there now.
So, their proposals, do they include the same quality of equipment? I mean, I'm just seeing the difference.
The difference is primarily 60, 60 points on our rubric was cost. So, about eight points of that drop is because of cost. The other is that the one's closer than the other in the proximity. Really, they both were very high quality. One, one just was substantially higher cost-wise than the other.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Demmsdale?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. Ms. Haywood? Ms. Haywood, Community Schools Update.
Good evening, everyone. We have Mrs. Lynn Love and Mrs. Erlene Dixon from Community Schools who will present their annual report.
Right here. Did y'all want to talk about it?
No, I just, just a little.
It's all right. Yeah, it's...
We can go back where we need to.
Just checking.
We can go back where we need to. You know, I look like a pod player.
Am I good to start?
Yes.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. I am Lynn Love, Executive Director. Erlene Dixon has many titles in our organization. She's our SST Coordinator and one of our Program Managers. She and I just wanted to present our end-of-the-year data to you, and then also kind of tell you our plans for next year as an organization. So just overall, we serve more than 573 students at all the schools that we're currently serving here in Glen County, and 100% of our CIS students at both high schools graduated on This is kind of fuzzy and hard to see. Sorry about that. But these are our Tier One supports. Over to the left, you can just see the supports that were provided. I may have to get closer so I can actually see them reading some. Just green is academic assistance, behavior intervention, college and career preparation, community service, learning, enrichment, motivation, family engagement, social skills, physical health, and professional mental health. And these are the basic needs, just kind of clothing, hygiene, food, school supplies that we were able to provide. And you can see over 400 supports, 1,019 hours, over 53,000 students were served, 3,300 parents and guardians were served, and then just 243 entries for basic needs and resources. So, Erlene, if you want to...
It's just a duplicated number of students. So those are all the Tier One services that we provided at every school that we serve in, meaning that those are offered to all students regardless of being case managed by CIS.
Right. So any student can enter our room to receive a basic need any time of the day. This is just our student snapshot, just showing our case-managed students. Our Tier Two supports are more of a group-type support. So if you have a certain amount of kids who, let's say, need a social skills or grief group or something like that, we can group them together and offer that support. And these Tier Three are our one-on-one case-managed student. They're our most at-risk students, and this is just the supports broken down in the chart. If you have anything to add to that, Erlene?
I don't have anything to add. I don't know if you guys have any questions. I just kind of breaks down everything that we've done throughout the school year.
Sorry, it's blurry. It was a blur on our computers. I think it's just the screen. And then, these are just, you know, the attributes of the students we serve, of course. Most of our students are free and relieved, reduced lunch. And then the second factor contributing to the students that we're serving, they've experienced or been exposed to trauma. Should be able to see that better. Just wanted to break down the high schools for you all, to show you that we did case-manage 94 students this year. We had 22 seniors all graduate on time. All 22 of those seniors were either enrolled in post-secondary education, they entered the workforce in the military. So we had every one of those seniors up plan upon graduation. And then Brunswick High School, 95 students were case-managed, 14 seniors all graduated on time, and all 14 had a plan upon graduation. And this, our middle school data, we combined for you, the three middle schools where we serve, just broken down, we case-managed 81 at Glen Middle, 66 at Needwood, 80 at Jane Macon, and 153 students out of all those case-managed students were promoted to the next grade level. So I'm going to let Erlene kind of explain the students who were not promoted to the next grade level and kind of the reasoning behind that.
So 29 of our students had to go to summer school in order to move on, and 50 of those case-managed students throughout the year moved or transferred before the end of the year, before we had the actual data. So either they moved to a school that is not a CIS school, or they moved out of state or out of the county.
Okay, and then elementary school data, our three elementary schools, 52 at Burrows, 51 at Goodyear, 48 at Altama, 138 students were promoted to the next grade level. Anything about that?
We only had 13 students that did not end the year with us. A lot of those students transferred from CIS school to another CIS school in which we started, so we were able to transfer those students over to the case manager at those elementary schools.
Okay, and just want to talk about Glen Learning Center a little bit. It is a fully functioning CIS site, and we are implementing the model. We include family engagement and teacher and student incentives. Case management is available to all students. Just, we've implemented a CIS BUCK system to help support PBIS for 222 students this school year. It's a duplicated number. We facilitated mentor life skills groups in partnership with Safe Harbor Street B program with 26 students this year, and academic tutoring services and credit recovery support provided by a volunteer to serve 12 students. And then Tanya Barbie, who is now going to be serving, of course, as your mental health coordinator, I'm just going to kind of, where she ended up last year providing one-on-one support to students, she was working with 44 CIS students one-on-one. They received that clinical support. She would go to the school and meet with those students for mental health, and she put in a total of 147.5 hours of clinical support. And we just have plans next year to really collaborate with Ms. Barbie. We're going to kind of see, once she's kind of into her role and we kind of figure out the resources she's going to be able to identify and provide, we'll kind of decide if we're still seeing gaps with our CIS students. And from there, we may look at hiring someone, but I think we're just going to give it some time and see what Ms. Barbie's able to put in place for us. I'm going to turn this over to Erlene, it's her expertise.
So we started providing the check-and-connect behavior intervention for students that have been identified in the classroom, whose behavior's hindering the learning, or their learning process, or a disruption to the classroom for other students. We, our site coordinators, collect progress monitoring data for those students, and we collaborate with the MTSS core teams at every school in which we serve, work closely with the counselors, school psychologists, everyone involved, teachers, to help support those students as much as possible to kind of identify if it's a true learning disability, or if it's just, maybe it's just a wraparound service or some sort of barrier to their education that we can get in place for them to help. So we started the school year last year with 36 students right at the jump in August that were identified, receiving the intervention, and also part of the MTSS process. And then at the close of the school year, we ended still serving 20 students continuing the intervention. Those numbers fluctuate. We identify, or the school identifies, and we work with many students providing the intervention, and they just may not necessarily be in that SST process with the plan.
And then our plans for this school year. Glendale Elementary has been on our, the school systems list, in our list, for a few years now, and I was able to secure funding with a local family to go into Glendale. So we're really excited about that. We have already hired our site coordinator. She's great. She was the parent outreach coordinator there, so she kind of knows the school and the staff and the students already. So that was just a great transition for us. We were very fortunate. So we're looking forward to serving at Glendale. We just really appreciate our partnership with the school system so much, and we meet with Sunitra and some other members of the district office from time to time, join us, and just really making sure we're on the same page, and that we're meeting the expectations that you guys have for us, and those kind of things. We'll just continue that. And then, one thing that our staff did was a TBR training. It's a trust-based relational intervention, of course. I don't need to tell you, behaviors have been the big issue with students, especially the students that we serve. And our site coordinators, I just think, needed some extra tools. We're just living in times we haven't lived in before, a lot of mental health issues, as you know, and we just kept hearing behavior, behavior, behavior. And so our staff has been fully trained in TBRI. It is evidence-based. It's just really learning, there's a lot to TBRI, but at the end of the day, if I could kind of sum it up for you, it's really learning how to connect with a student where they are before you correct. So it's all about just building that trust instead of going right into correction. And the studies show that there's tremendous difference when you can build that relationship and that trust and connection with a child before you implement a correction. So it's just, it's just an approach. There's some language involved that all our staff can use, and so we're looking forward to seeing how that rolls out. And if that, I feel like those skills hopefully will help our staff be able to address some of the issues that we're seeing with our students. And then we project this year to be case-managing about 840 students. CIS National has changed their standards for us this year. We used to, in the previous years, case-managed 5% of the school population, it was 1,000 or under.
More.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, more. And then it was 10% over 1,000 students. So of course, at the high school, that's a lot of students. And so we have been able to get some funding to provide two site coordinators at the high schools now. So that's the plan going forward. We have two site coordinators at Brunswick High and Glen Academy. You know, of course, and for our middle schools, they're going to have pretty heavy caseloads too, but we just knew, high school, there's no way that they would be able to manage that many students. So that's our plan for next year, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do y'all collect any data that follow up with the students that have been through the program and moved on to their next steps? It's probably pretty hard.
It's tough. We've looked at it. We would like to be able to, we've looked at some programs out there, but it requires those students to log in to a computer and to, so official data, no. Haven't really found a great way to do that, but once you've, those site coordinators have built that relationship with those students, you'd be amazed they can keep up through all sorts of ways. A lot of times, they'll come back and visit them, or, you know, contact them, let them know what they're doing or how they're doing. And so our site coordinators actually have a pretty good handle on how our students are doing after they've left high school, if they've completed college, if they're still in the, you know, in the military, or if they're still, you know, in the workforce.
Sure. Even though to get them to that point is probably a great success for those students.
It is. I think the problem is the students have that support all along, and then we've found, like especially students who are college-bound, they don't really have that support anymore, and there might not be somebody at home that knows how to help them with FASFA, or is used to those kind of things. So, you know, that's the challenge. It's almost like they could use some support to continue on, you know, through the other side of high school. I mean, our site coordinators do do that sometimes, especially if that relationship is still intact, but there's no formal real way that we've found yet to be able to really track the data.
Got you. Well, thank y'all for what you do, you know, while they're students of ours. I think it makes a huge difference.
Thank you.
In those students while they're with us and beyond, even though we're not sure, but it makes an impact, I feel.
Well, at least, you know, if you have a high school diploma, it's much better than not having a high school diploma. So, you know, that's our main goal, and then to make sure that they have some plan after graduation, and, you know, we just hope and pray that they're able to be successful through that. So, and we just thank you for your partnership. We can't do it without you, and we appreciate you, and just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I say it every year, but it's amazing what you guys do, and now you're even doing more than what you've done in the past, and it does make a difference. I've seen your folks at going the extra mile of being at individuals' games and, you know, just their extracurricular activities that go well beyond the classroom and that type of thing, and the site of, you know, coordination and actually being out there and being part of the student's life, and I think that makes a huge, huge difference. And hopefully, with Ms. Haywood and her staff, we can, you know, lend more support, as you said, you know, to do more things with those types of things, and even maybe we can implement something for the seniors and stuff moving forward with the FASFA and those types of things, and some of our guidance counselors or whatever else we may be able to do with registration and registrars and whatnot. But again, as Ms. Sam says, just thank y'all for what you're doing, your staff. I know we don't see all of those. We see you guys every year, but it's, I know there's a lot more people behind the scenes doing things and boots on the ground, so...
That's who's on the front line.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a great staff.
Please pass along to them our thanks and our appreciation for all that they do. So thank y'all very much.
I sure am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haywood, do you want to? Back-to-school information.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In collaboration with our Public Relations Department and in alignment with our system's strategic goal of moving towards a paperless administrative environment, we implemented the, an electronic way of being able to get back some of the documents we're required to get at the beginning of the year, this annual documents that we send out. And again, we were doing this in an effort to try to lessen the burden on parents with, if you have multiple children, having to do this with three and four kids at one time, and for our staff. Our homeroom teachers will have to collect all of those forms, try to keep up with who they didn't have one for, and we just wanted to find a way to be able to take some of that off of their plate and make sure that we're also being efficient as well. And so I just wanted to kind of walk y'all through what this process is, and wanted to make sure that I could clarify any concerns. First and foremost, we do use cloud-based storage that belongs to us through Laserfish, just like we do with OneCall, just like we do with Infinite Campus. It is an American company out of Texas, and they have a strong reputation. They've been in business for 70-plus, 60-plus years. If you'll go to the next slide, I want to show you just, this is from a mobile view, so it's compatible. You can use a mobile device, or you can use a computer to complete it. And so we, the system, Glen County, sent out this email to make parents aware they received a code, and they were able to then log in. And if you'll go to the next slide, it is simply, the forms that we use through this are the attendance agreement, which we're required to have every single year, club opt-out, which again is another requirement that we have to do, where we give parents the opportunity to decide if there are clubs at their school that they don't want their children to participate in. We also provided the FERPA notification that we're required to provide every year by law, behavior contract, and then the write-to-know document, which is about teacher certification. Those forms are all in there. We were able to do them in English and in Spanish. And I want you to see just the next view from the computer view, and essentially you see the names of the forms down the left-hand corner. The middle gives you the status. So if a parent is completing these forms, they can see whether they've completed it or whether it's pending. One of the things that we did this year to try to make it easier for parents, you'll notice that there's some forms where both children, both of my children are listed. That's because those forms are specific for those two children, like they have to pick their clubs, they have to sign off on behavior, those things. The other ones, you'll see there's one because it will then cover every child in the family. So if you have four or five children, that, completing that form covers for all of them. And again, in an effort to try to... And again, in an effort to try to, um, help parents with cutting down on the time that it takes for these particular documents. And if you go to the next, um, screen, the next slide, this is the attendance agreement. It's the same paper document that we send home at the beginning of the school year every year and, um, we just were able to send it out to parents so that they could electronically receive it. Um, there are several districts in the state of Georgia that, um, have partnered with Laserfish, Fayette County Board of Education, Crawford County, Dalton Public and Crawford County and did call and check in with different people to see how they were doing each of, matter of fact, Fayette County, um, they've been using it for several years. They use it for ju- more than just their back-to-school documents. They use it, it's actually a repository. So, they keep their documents they have to keep up with and on their retention schedule. So, they use it for a, a myriad of different things outside of what we're using it for. Um, and so, again, I, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Wanted to make sure that I provided y'all with an update on what we're doing, um, to try to make things easier for our parents.
Thank you. I have something. Um, I know every year, I've heard people for the last few years ask, why are we still doing this on paper? Uh, but paper documents are still available for those who wish.
Yes, ma'am.
To do it that way.
Yes, ma'am. They can opt to complete it on paper. Um, we've provided the Spanish and the English packet for our schools, so they, they're available for them there as well.
And they would just get that through the teacher, the student?
The school, each school will decide how they, um, how that looks. They have those, cause, you know, we don't want to tell them how they need to do it, just give them the autonomy to do what's best for their school. So, um, they can, pick them up from the school. Yes, ma'am.
So, the parents that don't have, uh, computer skills, access to a computer, are we providing a lab for them to come in and walk through the process?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, there were several that came yesterday. I was out at Greer and, um, there was a lab that was available, not just for this, but also for our free and reduced lunch applications and those things. So, yeah, there's always gonna be that opportunity. Also, with our parent involvement coordinators, they have computers in their classrooms, so if parents need assistance with walking through that, those, um, options are available as well. But we wanted to make sure we had something also that, um, individuals could access through mobile devices, cause while sometimes people may not have computers, they may have a mobile device that they use for, um, accessing the internet and those types of things, so. Good question.
So, the, the data is still housed here?
In our cloud, our cloud storage, yes.
Just like it was last year with paper forms?
The paper forms that we had last year, we have to shred every year.
Right.
And so, we contract with, uh, local shred company to shred those documents.
Um, so Laserfish, they just provide the online forms?
That is correct.
They collect the data and it's transmitted to us? I mean, I don't understand how that, is it housed on our server or how does that work?
Well, so the, the.
No, it's not housed on our.
It's not housed on the server.
We're paying for, we're paying, just like we do with Infinite Campus.
Uh-huh.
We are paying for.
For cloud storage, basically.
For cloud storage.
That belongs to us.
We've been doing Infinite Campus like that for thirteen or fifteen years, so this is basically the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
We're just paying for cloud storage.
Sure. So, how much is it costing in addition to what we normally do? What's this Laserfish service cost? But this is new, so how much is the?
It was, the total for all of this is eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, but we spend probably twice that paying for shredding.
No, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think there was, I, I've heard some concerns about, you know, data security stuff.
Yes, sir.
And it sounds like to me that we're doing the same process we always have.
Yes, sir.
Is that safe to say?
That is correct.
When we did paper forms, do we, do we upload those to, or do we just keep the paper form on file?
We just keep the paper form.
So, nobody's keying that information into a system, we just keep the paper?
Yes, that's correct. The only thing that would be keyed is the health form. Those go directly to the nurses.
Right.
So, that there's any medical concerns that maybe have changed or medication changes, they have that information readily available. But outside of the health form, those documents are just kept on, in a filing cabinet every year and then we shred them at the end of the year. The attendance agreement is part of the truancy process and part of compulsory attendance, so we have to provide these things, um, by Georgia law.
You have questions?
Yeah, I just have a, a request and, and this is probably on me because I probably missed something, but it, it's just happened a couple of times and again, it's probably on me not being as involved as I need to be, but a couple of times this year, like this sort of happened and maybe I just missed it. You know, we, we launched these things and it's on Facebook and people were giving feedback before we have this sort of presentation to really kind of understand the impacts. I mean, I think there's no point in creating sort of an issue and not being able to get out in front of those things before we have a chance to talk about them like this. I ca- I couldn't answer a lot of those questions until, I mean, I had no idea what Laserfish was or if they were keeping the data. People were worried about their, you know, security of their information and it's all stuff that's happening these days. I think it's legitimate concerns. Same thing happened with us buying school supplies. I think it's wonderful, it's awesome feedback, but it launched on Facebook and I was like, okay, great, we're doing this, you know? You know, I don't have much of a cost or where stuff's coming from, but, you know, we, it's all positive stuff. It'd be nice to get a little bit of a heads up, I think, before we launch programs so we can have some discussion about it and how it'll impact student data and that sort of thing because there, you know, whether or not you want to believe people are concerned about it, it's, it, you know, there was a lot of feedback on Facebook and stuff about the fact that, well, what's happening, you know? And, and I knew, people should know, that we always provide written forms when people can't get online and that sort of thing. We've done that forever. Um, so I don't think that was the issue, but just data security and stuff and not really knowing, and it'd be in a new process, maybe before we launch things like that, we could have a discussion or, or at least get a heads up about it. I may disagree with that, but it'd just be nice to know. That's all.
Data security is very important.
It is and people were raising cane about it and I was like, I don't know what to tell you, so I'll ask some questions.
Cronos was an international company and I got hacked and it really messed it, so.
They pay dearly.
It's bigger than this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haywood.
Yes, sir.
Next, I want to talk about the Center for the Arts. Progress real fast before Mr. Griner takes over. You, you gotta go back up. It's right there, both where she was just at. So, I got this from, um, Dr. Johnson at the college. Can you make that a little bigger, please? So, first of all, they have not drawn any money from the twenty million dollars. And so, basically, they have been meeting, uh, they have hired, uh, a contractor, an architect and you can see those guys there. They're using McKnight Construction as their contractor. And, um, Mr. Waters has been meeting with them. Mike Blackerby was, they were the two folks that we chose to represent us on their meetings. And so, um, they're gonna have their site dedication in April and they're groundbreaking in August and they are gonna start construction or they're gonna try to be done somewhere between December and February of two thousand twenty-five, so. Any questions or concerns about the Center for the Arts? Other, I've got some questions out in public and I just wanted to bring that to you unless you see the timer.
I just, I mean, I feel like this is a well-known, reputable company, but McKnight Construction is also our contractor for St. Simon's Elementary, so I would just hope that there's not gonna be any conflicts.
Yeah.
That there with the two projects. I know they're somewhat staggered, but the St. Simon's project is quite long-term.
Do they have a, I'm just looking, do they have a number yet?
Number is in how much it's.
They do not exceed number from, from McKnight.
Yeah, no, they, I don't have to see.
I'm just looking to see when they just hired them.
They're still on the plan.
I got you.
All right. Any questions here? All right, Mr. Griner, you are up.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Spence. Um, twenty-two, twenty-three millage rate discussion. Um, so you have before you, we, uh, received the, uh, tax digest from Mr. Chapman on the Tuesday of this week. So, um, this is the, uh, the five-year history, um, including and then adding in the current year, which is twenty-twenty-two. Um, I'll skip down to where it says adjusted net M and O digest, about halfway down the page, under twenty-twenty-two. Uh, you can see almost a little over five-point-six billion. So, um, the highest digest, I think Mrs. Preston had kept back to nineteen ninety-nine on the chart that she's presented with the general fund budget. This is the highest it's, uh, been since, since that tracking was done. It's probably, I, I won't go on record and say it's the highest ever in Glen County, but it may, it may be. Uh, previous to that, if you look at the chart that she's been presenting, it was two thousand eight, which was five-point-three billion, so. Uh, keep it in mind, we budgeted a, a, a four percent increase. Um, you can see over to the right a little bit from that five-point-six billion that our total increase is almost twelve percent, so. Um, so this is where we stand with the, the twenty-two digest. If you go to the next page, uh, please, you'll see this is the rollback calculation we have to compute every year, uh, to be in compliance with the Department of Revenue and with, so Mr. Chapman can submit the digest. Uh, basically, what this does is take the inflationary increase in the digest, so you're looking at any property that was on the books in twenty-twenty-one, what those values increased in twenty-twenty-two. So, if you look at that reassessment of existing real property, looking at the net number, it's, uh, almost four-hundred-and-twenty-seven million increase there. So, then you go down to the bottom down here, um, where you actually calculate what is that rollback millage rate. So, to get back to where taxes were in twenty-twenty-one, based on the inflationary increase, the millage rate would be fourteen-point-nine-eight. So, that's our rollback rate for this year. Um, lot different than last year. I think our percentage tax increase last year was a couple percent. Um, we're at eight-point-one-six percent this year, if we keep the millage rate at, uh, sixteen-point-one-five-seven. Um, the next, um, item of information I have was just kind of laying out a tentative calendar, uh, to me, you know, to get this into Mr. Chapman so he can submit it to the state for final certification. So, tonight was just really to have a discussion about the millage rate. Um, and once I get through with this, definitely open it up for questions, try to answer anything y'all have tonight. Uh, hopefully approve the tentative millage rate, uh, next Tuesday night and then we can do our ad process. It's a fourteen-day process, basically, to get through the legal requirements the Department of Revenue has. We would run our first ad, uh, which is the five-year history and, you know, with the millage, tentative millage rate, August the eleventh, run the second ad on August seventeenth. And then, these meetings, we can, um, the times, um, if we try to stay within the two weeks, we're looking at August eighteenth, having, we have to have three public hearings unless we do the rollback rate. Do the rollback rate, you don't have any public hearings. Um, so, August eighteenth, kind of going by what we did last year, we did a twelve o'clock noon meeting and then we did, you have to do one meeting between six and seven in the evening, that's required by law. So, we would have a, you know, a special call board meeting on that Thursday night at six and then on the twenty-fifth, we, a noon. Those noon meetings can be shifted around, that's just the time. I use what Mrs. Preston used last year. I think we had two noon meetings last year. Last year, we were able to work this around the special call meeting in July. Um, unfortunately, this year, there was a slight delay. Uh, Mr. Chapman and I have been communicating. I think he finally got the final information he needed from the assessors this week, so that's why we weren't able to do that. So, we're, we're, we're pushed back a little over a week from where we were at last year in getting this process done, so. Um, but again, I'll open it up, um, for any questions you might have. There were a couple more, I'll tell you what, let me, a couple more notes I wanted to mention. Um, you know, when we look at this, I think some things to keep into consideration, you know, as we've mentioned, inflation, prices of everything are rising. When's the recession gonna be? I wish I had a crystal ball, don't know. I will say, when the digest was at its highest in two thousand eight, it went down to, you know, in the next five-year period, it went down twenty-nine percent. So, I don't think we're gonna have that kind of a start decrease like we had back, hopefully back in two thousand eight, cause trust me, that's when I got into education finance and it was not fun. But, um, you know, looking at that five-year history, you know, we're kind of maybe the high water mark now. I was reading a couple of articles today where this economist was saying, and it's not specifically for this area, so you can take it for what it's worth, but said that housing values are probably overvalued, about fifteen to twenty percent right now and housing prices are starting to drop. Um, I think two percent in June is what this economist was estimating. So, we're gonna start, you know, what's that correction gonna look like next year? I, I don't know. Um, I know that, that there seems to be more of a buyer's market now mortgage rates and we'll talk about this when we talk about the investment policy. Rates are definitely going up on the mortgage side too, so I think there's, you know, the trends are definitely there for a potential recession. Also, keeping in mind that we've got some general fund, um, or we've got stuff funded in CARES right now that's gonna go away in a couple of years and that's gonna have to come back through the general fund as well, so as we kind of consider what the millage rate might look like. Um, Horizons, Academy, all those positions are completely funded out of CARES right now, you know? I see that program being successful, so in two years, we may have to, you know, pull those back into the general fund, so. So, just stuff to keep and, you know, as we go, if we do go through a potential recession, there's always austerity cuts, um, at the state level. So, it's a double whammy anytime you go through any potential recession. You're losing tax digest and you're losing state funding. So, that's, you know, just some things to keep in mind as we discuss, you know, where to set the millage rate, you know, for this year. Um, so I'll open the, the floor for any questions y'all might have, um, based on that. I know that was kind of a.
Yeah, I've been saying for a couple of months now that we need to look at a decrease in the millage rate and now I'm more convinced. I mean, I, I understand everything you just said about potential recessions and housing market decline, but I don't think it's gonna be anything like we saw, um, during the collapse, if you will, and, I mean, it's, it's, the percentage increase is double what it's all gonna be. So, what I would like to see, I don't, you could do a different form if you want to, but what I'd like to see is, is Miss Preston used to do like three pages, show, show us the general fund kind of budget, um, show us with keeping the millage rate the same, like a quarter mill and a half mill reduction and maybe a full mill. I mean, that's, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting we go back to the rollback rate. I never, I never suggested that, but, but in my opinion, we need to seriously look at returning some of this. No, no matter what the economy, we think it's gonna be, like you said, we don't have a crystal ball, but we knew all along we had to make some decisions about CARES act fund. We can't sustain fifty million dollars or wherever it was over for the rest of, you know, that's just not gonna happen. There're gonna, we got to make some tough decisions for sure.
Right.
And I agree with you about Horizons and I think we probably want to keep, but there's some things we're gonna have to, to look at, you know, with a sharp eye too, so.
Right. And, yeah, that could give you what, you know?
I just wanted to see those numbers and like what we're gonna look at, what the, you know, reserves will look like after that, if we're gonna transfer any to.
Right.
Capital projects just before we can make a decision on.
Right.
If you're asking me to do it right now, I, I don't know. I'd say a mill, but maybe that look right on paper. So, what's a mill worth now? Cause it was.
Um, it's five-point-six million before we factor in the, a little over five-point-six, so then you gotta take in the ninety-nine percent. And I agree with Mrs. Preston, we used to use ninety-eight percent.
Right.
Mr. Chapman's done a great job collecting, so I think ninety-nine percent is probably in line and then we, the two and a half percent we pay for the, you know, state mandated, we pay to Mr. Chapman for collecting the taxes. So, once you factor that in, you're probably, you know, five-point-six. Um, I don't, I ran it at a, a point-two-five decrease and a point-five decrease. So, you're looking at probably.
Oh, gosh.
Five, a little over five million, probably, you know, if you do a mill coming back out of, we, uh, the original general fund budget had us using about one-point-two million in reserves, so.
So, if we left it at, at the same millage rate, what dollar amount would that increase be? We're, we're counting on four percent and leaving the millage rate the same.
Right.
We leave it the same at eight percent, what's that dollar value difference? Does that make sense?
It does. Uh, that would be an increase in revenues of a little over six, about six-point-two million. So we would have reserves, we'd be adding to reserves of about 5 million.
Right.
So then if you go back down, you know, if you do it, and I can present this at the board meeting-
Well, that's okay, it's making sense as you go through it.
Yeah, if we do a quarter, you're looking at, you know, about a $4.8 million increase over what we budgeted. So then you're looking at reserves of 3.5 million. If you do the, the 0.5, and I, if we, if we do end up doing a quarter or 0.5, I like to just round, because the whole 0.157, so I did it at 15.9 and 15.65.
Sure.
You're looking at a $3.4 million increase at 0.5 reduction, and then about a little $2.2 million increase to fund balance. If you do the full rollback, you're, you're looking at taking another half a million out of reserves, so you'd be at about 1.7 million, we'd be taking out of reserves, so.
As much as I'd like to, I think it might be a little short-sighted, you know, given the fact we don't know what-
Right.
-the future's gonna look like, but given that, given that increase, I think we need to give something back, but I don't know, everybody else feels about it.
Well, the difference between the two rates is almost one and a quarter, so a full is gonna take you almost to the rollback rate.
Right.
I'm just gonna say this, because I say it every year, and it, for the people that have Scarlet Williams, which we have that in this county, we're fortunate that if you've frozen your valuation, this, this doesn't increase your taxes to keep it at the same millage rate we've had, because you've got the same evaluation, the same millage, so you'll have the same tax calculation. So I think sometimes that gets lost in, in the translation of how we have to do these forms. So who does this hurt? I mean, it hurts the people that are, you know, haven't locked in with Scarlet Williams, the people that don't have the primary residence, so therefore can't get Scarlet Williams, and the people that are buying houses, you know, right now. But if you lock in at Scarlet Williams at a higher rate, and the rate drop, not the rate, but your valuation drops, then you can re-lock at the lower rate. So there are all kinds of factors that come into this, too, that, you know, we might want to consider.
Right.
Yeah, I'll make a statement, I agree with Mike, I'd like to look at the quarter, the half, and the full mill. And this is my statement last year, I was wanting to roll it back last year a little bit, and this board has done a great job, this is before I was on the board, managing this budget, and not having to raise the millage through the bad times. So now that we're into the good times, just my perspective is like, we've still managed the money very well, and spent the money real well, so we, I think we can get a cut. I mean, we've managed the money well throughout the whole, my time on here as well as before the time, so I definitely would like to, to look at it, and I think the quarter, the half, and the full would be, you just kind of see that.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of why, Dr. Spence and I talked about it while we didn't present that tonight, is I kind of wanted to get a feel for, like, where y'all might be leaning, like quarter, half, and one, and then what we can do at the, on August night, I'll have that up here, I'll add that as a document, and then you can see it. I know, reading out the numbers sometimes, if it's not on the screen, it's a little harder to digest, but I think that's kind of what I wanted to get a feel for tonight, was just to kind of see, you know, what y'all would like to see presented. I mean, I've got it already done, it would just be adding that mill on there, so.
Those things have to put up, gives the public also time to look at it, and get some feedback, that's who we answer to at the end of the day, anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just as soon as you plug those numbers, can you just email them to us?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So we can look at them before-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get them done tomorrow, or whatever.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I got it, it's all done now, I just need to add the mill. So other than that, I can send it first thing in the morning.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, and it also shows, what I've got on here is, you know, estimated taxes under each scenario, where we were at with the original budget, increase, decrease, and then what the projected net income or loss would be for next year, and then also what the tax increase would look like, because you go on there, if we do the full rollback, it's like 8.16%, so I'll have that on there so you can see it, too. So if you do, because ultimately, what gets advertised when we do the ads is gonna be that increase. Of course, keep it in mind, you know, we're still, even if y'all decide to lower the millage rate, there's still gonna be an increase.
Right.
Because people, you know, if your value went up, if your value went up on your house, if your value of your house didn't go up, you might, you're gonna get the benefit of less taxes because the millage rate went down. Like Mrs. Sam said, it depends, there's so many different scenarios that factor into that. But I can definitely, I'll email that out in the morning.
One other thing to remember is, we are gonna see some sort of recession. It costs us a half a million dollars a day to operate school system, and so every, we were one of the very few school systems in the state that had, we didn't have many for early days, I think we had four, five, and we were able to stay open. So if something does happen, we want to be able to stay open, and we want to be able to stay open for our community, because they want school to be open. So that's another thing to remember, along with the inflation, the cost of goods, everything we're buying, just like everything you're buying, is costing more. And so that, that's coming behind all of this, so just want y'all to remember that.
And that's, and that's a good point, but we're gonna have to reassess what we buy, who we hire, and all that. I'm not, the rest, I'm not suggesting we have a rift, or we're ever gonna get to that, but we're gonna have to slow down. You know, we have to put the brakes on, new programs, and this, that, and the other. And to Edie's point, I mean, we're gonna have to advertise we're raising taxes, even though we're not raising the millage rate. And I've been trying to explain that to people for almost 20 years, and it just doesn't sink in. But, you know, these people that do have second homes, the people who do have mortgages, you know, that, that they don't have Scarlet Williams on, they are adding to the $3 million in East Blots, we've realized over the past however many years. So, you know, I think it's time to give, give a break back, and we'll deal with what we have to, if it happens.
Scranton, you wanna go on down to the next item?
Yes, sir. This is a proposed investment policy, this is just to put it out there on the, on the table. It kind of wanted to address the why. Why I came up with an investment policy, and I think, you know, if we go, Chris, if you go to the US Treasury curve, not the data, but the actual graph, yeah, thank you. You know, I kind of wanted to highlight, you know, we, you know, right now, we have roughly about 55 million in the, in the, in our checking accounts for East Blots. Trying to take advantage of that, goo really does a huge, you know, part of our service they provide to us, is they provide us the cash flow of our capital projects, so trying to, to maximize what we have. Currently, on our checking accounts, we're earning 0.05%, which is typical of the market, you know, being a former banker, it's, it's what the markets look like the last several years, so it's, but I wanted to kind of point out what Treasury rates have done since the beginning of the year. So the bottom is where Treasury rates were, which is why we're earning 0.05% on our checking accounts right now. But if you go up to the solid green line, staying on the, down at the bottom, you see one month, six month, two year, I would never suggest going out any more than two years, you know. So if you go up, you know, straight up, you can see that the two-year rate actually today was like 3.05% right now. So it's trying to capitalize on what the market's giving us right now, to try to take advantage of, you know, as Dr. Spence mentioned with the, the center we're doing with the College of Coastal Georgia, you know, we've had that 20 million sitting in the checking account now for, so with rates, and it didn't make any sense to do this, you're probably asking, why haven't we been doing this? Well, it really didn't make any sense. The last three years, we would have, rates were so low, it didn't make any sense, but over the last several months, the market's definitely given us some advantages. To even take advantage of that 20 million, and, you know, use the cash flow analysis, try to do some short-term securities on that, I mean, I, just based on some rough calculations with our East Blots money, you know, we're probably capable of earning close to a million dollars over the next year, just in interest. I mean, that could pay for an additional project down the road as we start, you know, we're collecting our East Blots money so quickly right now, and the cost of building is going up, so, I mean, that's definitely, so it gives us the advantage of being able to, you know, have some extra money in our East Blots account that we can take advantage of, and trying to maximize what we already have. We're, we're getting the money in at a faster rate than what we're, that our projects, you know, are outlined for the next several years, which is good. I mean, we're collecting the East Blots money really quickly, but we're, you know, I just think there's some advantages there. I've done this in other districts where we've managed our East Blots money, one that I was associated with was Forsyth County, and we, we definitely, you know, we were earning close to a million, million and a half on our interest. This was back in 2018, 19, when the market was definitely higher as well, so we were just trying to cash flow that out. So if you could get back to the, the policy, Chris. So the policy is just, you know, basic policy that we give Dr. Spence and I the authority, we would report monthly to the board, or to y'all, you know, what we're investing in. I would never suggest investing, if you scroll down a little bit, there's only certain things we can invest in as a school district anyhow, it's gotta be safe, it's, you know, going back to my banking days, when I managed our investment portfolios, we had a lot more options, but these are definitely safer. I think it's a little bit further down, sorry. So basically, you have CDs, which the problem with CDs is you, you try to stay under the $250,000 FD, or right at the $250,000 FDIC insurance, you're kind of buying a bunch of CDs at one time, where if you do US Treasury, you can buy a big block, say, two, three million at a time. US Treasuries, of course, are fully guaranteed by the US government, so anything that's, you know, issued by the US government is covered, and this is, you know, definitely passes with our auditors, this is pretty much the standard investments you can buy for a school district. I would stick to CDs, US Treasuries, or the last item, which is the local government investment pool, which was created by, you know, code, Georgia Code Section. It's managed by the State Treasurer's Office, it functions like a money market account. There's no risk in it at all, either, and if we, Chris, could you get to that slide on Georgia Fund One, which is the, the local government investment pool, the rate district? And I apologize, this is gonna be sideways, I think I kept playing with this. Thank you. So I penciled in the rate for July, and I apologize, my handwriting's terrible. Dr. Green's agreeing, she's critiquing what I wrote down while I go. But if you go back to 2020, and you look at May and June, it speaks to what I was saying, rates were so low, it made no sense to do this. If you look at 2022, you can see the rates, they lag behind the US Treasury market, but we're at 1.08 and then 1.56 for July. I would suggest it's more probably with our general operating money, which is our fund balance, which we roughly have about 28 million in fund balance, trying to, trying to maximize it through this money market account, and then we can kind of schedule that out more so, if we needed, you know, you can get this back within a day from Georgia Fund One. So I wouldn't necessarily suggest with our general operating money doing US Treasuries, I think that's more for our East Blots projects. But I think this is definitely, this fits for general operating. I wish I could tell you how many school districts in Georgia use this, unfortunately, you have to kind of go to their different assembly websites and see if they report it. Some school districts report it, some don't. I will tell you the ones that I've been associated with, we use Georgia Fund One, and I, I know several other districts in this area, and throughout the state, use Georgia Fund One, and they mostly use it for their general operating account. We have a Georgia Fund One account that has like $20,000 in it, that was established many years ago. I don't think we've had, other than, we get about $20 in interest off in a month, but, you know, it's, it's kind of along the lines of, I think it's been that way, I went all the way back in 2015, I don't think we've had a deposit in it since 2015, so we do have one open, but I think it is good, you know, to have an investment policy to cover not only the board, Dr. Spence, and, you know, myself as the chief financial officer, I think it's good practice just to have that investment policy. There are our school districts who do this without an investment policy. I just think it's safer to have that policy in place, you know, as a protection. Because the main thing, you know, we're, we're trying to utilize the liquidity we have in our bank accounts right now, and then also do it in a prudent manner, with no risk at all to the school district, so. I just, again, it's just trying to maximize, you know, what we have in the bank right now, you know, trying, trying to work with the banks we do have checking accounts with, but I don't see them raising our rate anywhere close to, you know, 1.56, so we're still kind of negotiating that a little bit, so. But they haven't really adjusted their checking account rates right now. I think honestly, most banks have so much in deposits still, that they're, they're kind of slowly increasing rates, but it's not happening quickly, so I don't foresee that, you know, down the road. But again, this policy is just out there, would sit out there for 30, the 30-day review period, and then bring it back to the September board meeting for a vote. But I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. I was just trying to get to the why, you know, Dr. Spence and I had talked about this a couple months ago, and then just trying to formulate a plan for this.
So the Georgia Fund One, I'm sorry, Georgia Fund One would be where you'd take the, you'd use the general fund money.
Right.
Based on that, and this rate, I mean, what, what would just, because it'd be two different things, East Blots, you'd use US Treasury, right?
Right, right.
And then you'd use Georgia Fund One for the-
Right. I mean, you could use Georgia Fund One for East Blots, too, but yeah, for the general operating, I mean, I was just kind of using the rate, I didn't use 1.56, I actually used 1.08, it was about $250,000 to $300,000 in a year. And I mean, you know, I was telling Dr. Spence today, we just bought a new software package, the annual renewal, and that's about 200 and something thousand dollars. Now that you want to piece together one item with another, but I mean, it does pay for stuff like that, any additional programming we might want to look at. I mean, it's just, it's, it's taking advantage of the fund balance that, you know, y'all have done a great job of building over the years, and just putting that to use to try to, you know, provide a little bit of extra funding.
So you would manage this, you wouldn't have an outside advisor or anything like that, you would be the one to kind of, I mean, you've dealt with this, so this is what you'd look over.
I have. With Georgia Fund One, I would probably definitely manage myself. With the US Treasuries, we'd have to use an outside investment. Georgia Fund One is a matter of just Dr. Spence doing a resolution, you know, if the policy's approved, we've already got the account set up anyhow for our general fund account. With the US Treasuries, we'd use it outside, you know, basically to purchase them, and then they would save, they would hold those securities for us, we don't actually hold them, so they would, it's really just to protect, you know, again, us, but, yeah. And normally, you know, our, our current banking relationships are with Sandoval's and Truist, and they both provide that service, where we can buy those US Treasuries.
So you can go through the bankers to-
Yeah, it would probably be, it would be easier, just because we already have the checking account, and we could just, you know, as far as the, not having to do a wire transfer, some of that stuff, they could just ACH it out of our account, so, yeah. And I've, I've done business with Truist Securities over the years, and have a lot of trust in them. Honestly, with US Treasuries, there's not a, it's basically saying, I want a three-month, six-month, and they just go out and purchase them, I mean, that's whatever the market's giving on that day, so.
Gotcha. I think, I mean, I would like to look at what their fees are versus maybe some independent guys locally, but, well, I mean, that is just me.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, it probably would be easier, I would think, to go through the bankers-
Right.
For, for just, just a little bit of a streamline.
Yeah, what you find when you deal with Sandoval's and Truist, I will, I'll be upfront, the fees are only in the pricing and the securities, they, you don't see, like, normally, if you buy an investment yourself, you're gonna see the commissions on there, you'd never see that when you buy through an institution like Sandoval's or Truist, that's built into the pricing and the security. So it's kind of hard to track that, but yeah, I, you know, with US Treasuries, I definitely knew, I think those could be purchased locally through, you know, I knew through an average on Raymond James, something like, you know, like that as well. It's just, it's such a, that market, there's just, you know, I think it's easy to do that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Greiner?
I just appreciate you, you know, bringing something new like this to us, that helps us kind of make the most of what we're earning and receiving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, HMH Hosting Service.
So HMH is the hosting service for Read 180 and System 44, the reading program that a contract was signed for five years ago. We are in the fifth year of that contract, and so basically, this $50,000 fee is something that's assessed, has been assessed for the last five years, and this is the final year for that contract. So after this year, we will no longer renew Read 180 or System 44. So this is just a renewal for the software, for that program to take us through this, this school year. So it's like a last, a last installment, so to speak, of what we owe for Read 180 and System 44.
Any questions?
All right, I don't see Ms. Daniel, so I'll do that one, I'll be the nutritional specialist. I think she wanted to surplus an oven, yeah, and so she's asking that we'll be able to surplus an oven. And then next is agreements with John Tooten to renovate Satella Marshall Elementary. As you know, we have a, we have an agreement in place that he would be the architect for East Blots Four, but in that agreement, it says that we would, at each project, we would bring it before the board to, to allow him to be the architect, and so, basically the same agreement that we've done several times.
Any questions or concerns there?
The rates say the same?
Yes, sir.
Next is our, our agreement with Coastal Plains Education. This is with, basically the night school is what people call it, but it's with them, they pay us $150,000 to be able to use our facility, is what that says. And so we're, we're considered a full site because we have X amount of kids. I think I talked to Ricky today, if we have more than 150 kids, we're considered a full site, less than 150 kids, it's a satellite site, and so we, we get paid $150,000 to allow them to use classrooms at GICCA, and so that's what that agreement is. And then finally, the MOU with McIntosh County, Dr. Pulis, we allow the McIntosh County students to come to GICCA, they bring them, and they pay us the FTE. And so last year, I think there was 13 or 14 kids from McIntosh that came to GICCA, and they pay us around $36,000. This year, they are gonna have more students, but we, we have first write-up refusal, and so if, we tell them, this is how many slots you get, so that we're not full, but it really doesn't cost us anything, because we already are teaching the classes, and they already have it there, so it kind of benefits all of Coastal Georgia.
I noticed that we've been doing one-year renewals, but now this is set up for an indefinite renewal, but able to be, yeah.
It's without, so.
Right.
Seems to be working well, we didn't have, I don't think we had any troubles with, trouble with the kids from there, maybe one write-up or something, there wasn't, there wasn't much. The kids got along well, we didn't have any troubles. The business community seems to like the fact that we're allowing them to come, because that is the workforce for Glen County also. If there are no questions, that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. If there are no questions, that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. We can talk about East Plus. We can talk about the goo thing.
I just didn't change it off, I mean, if nobody had it...
I just left it on there, yeah.
Nobody's got any questions for Mr. Dinsdale as far as goo? Just wanted to give everybody an opportunity.
We did make 3.2 million. That is the most ever.
The highest.
The highest.
That's wild.
Geez.
That's crazy.
Recession.
Mr. Mansley?
Yes?
Before we go, can I just ask you a couple of things for future agenda? Are we allowed to go on the executive?
Yes, sir.
Can y'all just clarify real quick? I know it's not on the agenda, but can y'all please clarify, like, what our recess policy is? And if it, if it's not tonight, can we, can we talk about it Tuesday at every level?
No, I mean, I can talk to you.
Would you like, especially elementary, you know, elementary schools are?
Yeah, we do have a current recess policy, and it allows for 30 minutes a day of movement in elementary schools up through sixth grade, I believe it is. And so, we have that built in into our master schedules, and we've, we've actually just reassure, re-stated it with our principals to make sure they have a master schedule, schedule that shows a recess time for 15 minutes outside unstructured time, but then also movement time within the building.
Maybe that's what, where the, where the confusion is. Somebody was mentioning 15 minutes, you know?
Yeah.
And, and so, maybe it's the third they weren't understanding. So, if I get individual calls, I'll just let you know for clarification.
And actually, the policy says on recess is required on days they don't have physical education.
Gotcha.
And in elementary school, they, most kids have physical education two times a week.
Okay, perfect.
And it's not 30 consecutive?
It's not, it say 30 consecutive.
Sure, sure, I understand. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then, I don't know if it was right after Uvalde, or maybe it was just before that. I was in contact, I can't remember how I got in touch with him, with Sidney Bush at the Georgia Department of Homeland Security. And, and he sent me some documentation on what they do as far as threat assessments. And I know that, that Chief and our staff, they do a great job with what they're doing. And I think it always helps to have another set of eyes. And so, I would like to see a proposal from Chief on what we're going to do to bring an outside agency in to sort of look at where our, you know, issues could be that we need to address, as simple as they might be. If we could, if we could do that, I think an outside set always helps. I can send you that document he sent. I mean, I'm sure Chief probably has it. But it's a service they provide through the state. So, anyway, thank you. That's it.
Anything else, meanwhile? Entertaining motion to go into Dick's session for land legal and personnel. Question of Dr. Yerkes, I think, by Miss Giddens, any discussion? All those in favor. CNN is at 6:47.
Open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Edgy. I'll second it. At 7:21, I'm entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sam's, second. We got second by Mr. McDowell. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous at 7:21.